Okay, well, on the record, this is the Whitman Board of Appeals meeting for Monday, May 12th. Present for the board, Mr. Jones, Mr. Curran, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blas, and myself, John Goldrosen. This meeting's being recorded pursuant to the town bylaw, which requires that all public meetings be recorded and be posted on the Whitman Hansen Community Access website for people to listen to. So our first case tonight is case number eight, location of property, One Standish Ave., type of district, residence A2, type of structure, existing dwelling with a proposed attached garage. Owner's name, Mark Hughey?
Yes.
Okay. First try. Owner's address, One Standish Ave. When did you acquire this property? December 16th, 2003. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? Yes. For farmer's porch. Sections of bylaw which relief is requested? Section 240-6.5. Reason for asking relief? Applicant wishes to construct attached garage to existing dwelling built prior to existing setbacks. Existing entry area is on East Lee Side of dwelling, allowing access from garage into dwelling. This case was advertised in Whitman Hansen Express on April 24th and May 1st. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Jones, Mr. Curran, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blas, and myself, John Goldrosen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of abuddhas unless I hear a motion to waive the reading.
Make a motion to waive the reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion is made by Mr. Kimball, seconded by Mr. Curran. All in favor? Okay, five oh. Okay, would you raise your right hand and take enough the somnusphere of the yam shu shou given this match be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, would you introduce yourself for the record and for the recording and explain what you want to do?
Just stand up.
No, whatever you're comfortable with.
Name's Mark Hughey. I want to build a two-car garage attached to my house to, you know, basically store my boat in and the car. I don't know.
Okay. Can you explain what the history of this building is because it's, I mean, it doesn't meet the setback requirements from Standish Ave?
So when it was the house facing on Standish Ave, it's on Plymouth Street, that was the original farmhouse for the area.
Right.
So they built the two-bedroom ranch for the parents, which is what I'm in now. They never moved in. They, you know, went to a nursing home or whatever. I don't know the actual story. They never lived there, so I ended up buying it, you know, moved in, started having kids. House was too small, so off I went, you know? And then my pontiff had blew away with my boat, and that pissed me off, so that's why I'm here to build a ranch on.
And when, you know, I see there was a previous application, and I guess we must have granted relief for the porch, do you know?
The farmer's porch, correct.
Do you know when that was? I didn't look it up.
The farmer's porch was about the same time as the house, wasn't it? I think it was 13 years ago. Yeah, it was maybe a year after the house.
But you went to, you came to this board for a second level, too.
Ah, was it for the second level?
I think you did before that, like 20 years ago. How long you been in that house?
2003.
Yeah.
I don't know if I did or if I, I don't remember.
I would've sent you for the second level because it did meet the setback.
Yeah.
And then you did come back for variance to the front.
Correct, yeah. I don't remember.
So when, so when was the house built?
Oh, 1980, I think.
Okay. I mean, Bob, Mr. Curran, I don't know if you know, I'm just, I'm just surprised that the setback from Standish Ave is.
I think he's been, or that property's been to the Board of Appeals over the past.
Okay.
I remember he came for the farmer's porch.
Yeah.
And this board gave a blessing on that.
Yeah.
I think I also sent him for the second level, but I can't be sure.
Yeah.
I know the property well.
Yeah, the second level went on first, and then I came back for the farmer's porch.
Just seems, I mean, other than maybe an attempt to not, maybe there were reasons they didn't want to build within the Abington portion of the lot. Maybe Abington has stricter standards or something, and so it looks like the house is kind of squeezed into the Whitman portion.
I think so.
So there might have been some reason for that because even 1980 would have been, setback requirements would have been in effect then.
Yeah, I looked into everything about that house years, probably 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Everything checked out, so.
Yeah, okay.
And then he did, I made him come for variance to the front porch.
Right, because that would have been, and in second level, would have been increasing the intensity of the non-conformity. So, and just for the record for the board, so because this is a corner lot, effectively there's two front setbacks, both from Plymouth Street and Standish Ave, so he'd be required, he's required to have 30 feet from setback from both Standish Ave and from Plymouth Street. And with the proposed garage, it'll be about as close as 20 feet to Plymouth Street. The addition of the, of the garage isn't, well, it's still, even the garage is also within the setback from Standish Ave, but that's, that's an existing non-conformity. So actually what we have to give is a variance for the setback from Plymouth Street since that's new, a new non-conformity, and then a finding for the setback from Standish Ave since that's intensifying an existing non-conformity. But that's why I was asking the questions about why the house was built where it was, when it was. If, if, if the garage, if it wasn't Plymouth Street, if that was like an abutting property there, then the side setback would be 15 feet, so that would not be a problem if it wasn't for the fact that it's Plymouth Street from the garage. Okay, I just wanted to get that on record. So with the garage, be one-story, two, one-story?
Just one-story, same roof line, not the same roof line, but the same angle of the roof.
Okay.
And I want to do like, you know, a little roof over the two garage doors, just, you know, give some type of character.
Okay, all right. All right, let me read letters from town boards into the record, and then we'll have questions from the board. From the planning board, at the April 8th, 2025 meeting, the board reviewed the plan for One Standish Street. The planning board recommends denial over the requested relief. The property does not meet the required setback from an intersection, and the board believes that the 23 feet the property has brings it too close to the street. Adam Somerville, chairman. From the building inspector, the building inspector couldn't be here tonight because it's town meeting night in Halifax, which is where he lives, so he's, he's at town meeting. But he sent a letter. Dear honorable board, I have received and reviewed the application for variance to construct an attached garage to the existing dwelling located at One Standish Ave, shown on the plan by C.W. Gavi dated October 11th, 2024. This will require relief from Article 6, Section 240-6.5. At this time, I have no objection to this proposal. All applicable building codes shall be met, and it will be necessary for building permit to be issued by this office prior to construction. Respectfully, Robert Picarelli, Whitman Building Commissioner. And from Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services, at this time Whitman Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services has no objection to this proposal, provided all applicable fire and building codes are met. Sincerely, Nick Rasso. We did not get a letter from the board to help, but just for the record, you're connected to municipal water and sewer, correct? Okay. All right, comments and questions from the board, Mr. Jones?
Nothing, right this second.
Okay, Mr. Curran?
What side of the house is the kitchen on?
Kitchen's on the garage.
It's on that side, the power is in way. So you're going to park a regular vehicle in there and your boat?
I'm going to put the boat in and I probably a car. I have a car, you know, so I'll just keep that in there.
Well, the good thing about an addition there, it'll block some of the sound from Plymouth Street.
Yeah, that's true.
Is there an issue, Mr. Chairman, with Abington at all if it's just no structure Abington setbacks don't apply at all, right? They don't even?
Yeah, because it's, the structure is entirely within Whitman. Like I say, I suspect that that was the case, maybe, you know, you've got 22,900, which is fine for Whitman for the lot size, maybe Abington has a 30,000 square foot.
Yeah.
Because I'm noting that the, the notes that Kyle Gavi has in the map says parcel lies in the Abington residence R30 zone.
Yeah.
Is it, is it, do you know if it's 30?
No, no, I know he said it'll, he said it'll be in Whitman 100%.
Yeah, but I'm suspecting Abington's minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet, and that's why they didn't put any, any part of the house into Abington. Though it looks like a little bit of your deck might be there, but.
Yeah, it might be.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Kimball?
Yeah, no, the big concern is that you're only 20 feet away from the property line on Plymouth Street, and I have a concern that Plymouth Street's a state highway, and somebody coming to turn off Plymouth Street onto Standish Ave, you pull it out of your driveway, there's only 20 feet, not even a catalyte. So I think that that's a potential safety issue, and it doesn't meet the zoning requirement.
We probably should put, I mean, I don't think there'd be, we should probably have at least a condition that there be no fence between the garage and Plymouth Street because that would create that kind of, I mean, I can understand why you might want those on the garage, but we probably should have a condition to that effect so that, to make the sightline, you know, no worse than it would going to be with the garage there if we, if we approve it. Anything else, Mr. Kimball?
No, at this time, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've got a big lot. Is there, and you could put that garage anywhere on that lot. When I think about what it would cost, what it's going to cost to build that and have it kind of match the house and that kind of stuff, wouldn't it makes, might it make sense, or did you consider putting it somewhere to the left of the house and maybe put it, not necessarily have it match the house, and you could probably make it 50% bigger at the same price?
And put an apartment upstairs.
And put an apartment upstairs. It wouldn't matter that it's in Abington or part of it's in Abington because it'd be within the building envelope, or you, no, you wouldn't even need it.
Yeah, it might, it might still not be able to put it in Abington depending what their zoning bylaws. But, you know, as you're talking about a free, freestanding building.
Yeah, we're talking about freestanding, yeah. Well, you could, you pull the permit and mask in Whitman, so screw.
Or, or you could have it entirely within Whitman, it'd be, we might have to give a variance for the distance from Standish Ave, but, yeah.
I thought about that, too, but I would still, if it was my lot and that.
You'd put it behind. Yeah, it might be a problem. It might be a zoning problem for Abington, yeah.
Yeah. But you're going to have to put another, another driveway in, right? And that'll be pretty close to Plymouth Street.
Well, the driveway that's there, yeah, is just going to remain existing, and there's like a bush in the way right now. I just take the bush down.
So it has to be widened in the existing driveway?
Just widen.
Yeah, and I have behind the garage or where it would be this, I have an area I drive down there anyway, that's where the boat is now, you know? I just didn't want to take up more of the yacht, you know? I kind of like the yacht, I like the privacy out back and all that. It's only, not to mention it's nice if, you know, it's snowing or something, or if I do something, I just really don't want, you know, outside note to it.
That's all I have.
Okay. Well, I mean, I kind of understand where the planning board was coming from in, you know, if this property were vacant, I certainly would not be inclined to give this kind of relief, we'd say just shift it down. If it had to be close to Standish Ave, that wouldn't matter very much, you've got nobody across the street, you know, further down your lot, so, you know, I wouldn't.
If I'm going to decide, it takes out my deck and all of that and.
And you don't, well, so you have an entrance into the house off the deck. Is that, that sort of slopes downhill there, are you?
Yeah, it goes, it definitely goes downhill.
Are you, where you have your deck, is that like an elevated deck?
Yeah, it's about six feet.
So just for reasons, there's a, reasons of topography, even if you took down the deck, slapped the garage on that end of the house, you'd have a problem with the elevation between the garage and, and the house. So there's a top, that, that's at least a basis for a variance there. Other than that, I mean, I drove by and I, I agree that it's going to be closer to Plymouth Street than I would, you know, it ought to be, it's actually better in a way that, to me, that Plymouth Street is a larger highway rather than, you know, if we're talking that that was a subdivision street and now you're really close to it, it really sticks, sticks out like a sore thumb.
Actually, the state owns 50 feet from the center of the road, so a lot of your yard actually belongs to the state, so you've got extra yard there.
Yeah, yeah, so I can see some reasons to approve it. One, just it's the pre-existing situation. Two, the restrictions, likely restrictions with Abington zoning that make it more desirable to build it with, entirely within Whitman, because if it wasn't for that, you could even have pushed the garage, even, even, even having the garage attached to the house, you could push it back a little bit so it didn't have to be as close as 20 feet, but I, I think you probably restrict it essentially from building in Abington. And putting it on the other side of the house besides needing to replace the deck, there's a topography issue there with the slope of the land. So, you know, on that basis, I'm prepared to, I'd want a condition for no fence on that side. Also that it be, so one-story with, will it be a peak where you, so you're going to have some storage area above the thing?
I'll probably have a little bit of storage up there.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not going all the way up. I have windows up high that I really don't want to walk.
The orange block.
You know?
So, you know, restricted to one-story with some attic space so that the, there is not to be any apartment or residential use above, but Bob Curran, what would be the wording, not, no habitable space above?
No habitable space?
No habitable space.
Must be being a single-story structure with no habitable space.
So saying habitable space means you could still have an attic space, but the roof would be too low for it to be illegal, illegal occupancy. So I think with, with those conditions, I'm, I'm okay. And with that explanation for the granting of the variance. And as far as the finding from Standish Ave, it won't be any closer than the porch. It'll be in line with the house, and so it's, even though it's within the setback, it's not really making the non-conformity any worse because it's not closer to Standish Ave than the porches. Any more discussion? Anybody have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, isn't there a bylaw, out of the bylaws, that says the driveway has to be a certain distance from the street?
It has to be a certain distance from the next-door driveway, right?
There's a bylaw for a distance from the driveway to an intersection.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And that number is 55 feet.
All right, so it needs a variance from that then. I mean, he has an existing driveway, but you're probably going to widen it.
I don't know if that part of it says variable by the building inspector or?
Let me see if I can find it.
I can find it right now.
It should be in section 10. You get to take down trees?
Maybe it's not parking.
No, I don't think I have any luck.
Let's see, I'm looking in section eight, maybe 8.7. No driveway shall be closer than 50 feet to any driveway on any adjoining lot.
Eight, 8.7.
Yeah, it's 240, 8-8.7B. The last line is, let's see.
If you were.
Yeah, driveway shall be no closer than 55 feet to any intersection of street lines and not less than 55 feet apart, except in cases of narrow lots in which the building inspector, commissioner, inspector of buildings may authorize a smaller separation, but no less than 30 feet. No driveway, yeah. So, so, yeah, it would need a variance from that because even the building inspector can't allow it to be closer than 30 feet, and it's going to be. So we could, I mean, one thing you could do is, we could say a minimum of 20 feet from the layout on Plymouth Street, which might mean.
That would go all the way to the edge of the building.
Yeah, I mean, well, it angles a little bit, so it might be, I'm just thinking you might have it to be a couple of feet narrower at Standish Ave and then fully when you get to the building, to the garage, so it'd still be good, and now it is enough. That would still give you, besides what you have in the garage, I mean, presently you just, when I drove by there, you just had like one car parked alongside.
Well, the other thing is, I would say. I don't stack them there now.
Yeah.
It doesn't say the street layout line, it says the street line. So there's usually eight feet there?
Yeah, how, how you, how did you interpret that when you were building commissioner?
Went by the street.
By the actual location of the street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still not 55 feet?
Yeah, still not.
Yeah, it's still not 55.
And still not, probably.
This would be so much better if you could move it.
Someone push it back into Abington?
I don't think that's the issue. The issue is, is if Standish Ave were a busy street?
Yeah.
It would definitely be an accident there.
Oh, yeah.
You pull in and you slow down on one of your driveways, someone's going to rear-end you because there's no room. That's only the distance of a car. That's what that.
No, I always say.
So because you're on a slow street, I know how that is, you get no traffic.
Yeah, because that's presently what you're doing anyway. You're, you're parking alongside the.
But is it, you're the only house on Standish, right?
No, there's one up that.
Oh, so they extended the Standish?
Well, this board approved their commercial property down the avenue.
Right, but it's still.
No, it's residential.
Residential hall.
What is the other street then?
That's the next one over, I forget what the.
Yeah, that's a.
That's a, yeah.
Yeah, because we approved a change in use in the commercial property.
You want to put a apartment there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just one house, you know, down the back.
But it's.
So there's no traffic on Standish Ave?
And this is essentially keeping the situation the way it is because you already park alongside your house.
Right.
So he's already making that turn.
The snow power won't hit me because I follow it.
But anyway, I think, I think for, you know, to complete the record, we should give a variance for the separation of the driveway from Plymouth Street.
10 feet of relief from the required?
Yeah, 10 feet of relief from the required, well, the minimum.
50 reduced.
Well, it's 55, it can be reduced to 30, so let's just say a variance with the condition that you maintain a 20-foot distance on Standish Ave from the driveway to the layout of Plymouth Street. That'll make him reduce the width by a foot or two of the driveway. And then it can widen as it goes to the garage because you got 20 feet anyway from the garage, so, all right? Anything further?
Just make a notation that there were no abuddhas present.
No abuddhas present. Did you talk to the people across either of your, because you have one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're fine, yeah.
The people, so that's this Snide?
That's 24 I talked to and Snead I talked to.
Okay. Okay, good. Anything further? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for variance from Section 6, 6-5, for the, what counts as front setback from Plymouth Street, for the garage as shown on the plan, and a variance from Section 240-8.7B to allow the driveway to be as close as 20 feet to the Plymouth Street layout, and a finding for the intensive, for the intensification of the non-conformity along Standish Ave, the setback to Standish Ave. And the conditions we discussed was no fence between the garage or the driveway and Plymouth Street, so it's not to reduce the sightlines and the, any, garage is to be a one-story structure, any story space above garage is not to be habitable space and not to be occupied as a residence. Anything else? Did we cover, did that cover it all?
That's it.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion approved. Oh, and note, I just want to note one reason for the variance here for not requiring that the garage be on the opposite side of the house is the slope and the topography would make it difficult to match up the garage and the house. All right, motion by Mr. Curran, seconded by Mr. Blas. Anything further? All right, all in favor of the motion? Okay, five oh, you're all set. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, all opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Four one, Mr. Kimball opposed. Okay, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you so much.
30-day appeal period. There's a 30-day appeal period for abuddhas.
Carol, awesome.
Could you be, Carol?
Thank you so much. Dick, could see me?
See you, Mark.
Do you not have its zoning book?
I just have the one of my.
I thought I gave you one.
No.
Oh.
I just have the one of my.
The one you want more. I thought we were going to get, I thought we were getting one for you.
You can buy one.
No, you don't want to say anything. I can call them.
No, we'll, we'll have.
We bought extra, though.
I'll order one.
Yeah, we bought extra.
I thought, I thought we bought extras for one of them.
No.
Did you have to pay for it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll get, we'll, we'll buy one from Hot and Print, which has a map and everything, and as well get a couple extras.
Toilet reading. You're reading the one on the, that, that.
Yeah, one you get so you want.
The old one, did you? The older one. You'll be on all the, all the updates for the last 30 years. Yeah, your paper be more marked.
I mean, it is available online, the rapid, but it should have a hard copy.
We got two minutes. That's a lot. This list on this.
Right, I think I've seen it.
Sit down, cool down. That's what we put a school. And then you put a fence there, and then you put a five-speed on property. There's a tree.
That's the, you brought us this with us.
There's a tree and a tree, like it's a, like, like, is, no, it's actually right here on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
He didn't want.
Wait just a minute to guess, huh?
Fence on the other side of the tree, so he put a, his fence on my side of the five-speed on. Call it on. Who did you start that?
Oh, I know.
Do they have a fence? Well, they do, he, I didn't, I didn't, I sent him a, I sent him a registered letter at one point, because I didn't want to rent my own address. Oh, yeah, does it? So, and he sold one. Can I take a picture of the application rules?
Uh, yeah, in fact, I think I got an extra copy.
Place it. He actually, um, put it on his side. Oh, yeah, I asked him, why don't you take a tree out? Put it around the. You pay half the tree out, they have a tree, put a tree around, probably not, yeah, I'll pay half that fence. No, he didn't want, he didn't want to spend money on the tree. So he put it on his, like, four feet, on the, his side of the track, which is great, gives me an extra four or five feet. Yeah, but it probably would have been the same level, right? You pay for the tree, that fence. That part of, which was only five sections, about fifteen hundred.
Are you, uh, an abutter, or? Are you an abutter?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I knew.
And, um, but I did pay him half of the fence, so you guys agree on the side of the tree? But fences, like you say, this, and now I have an extra four or five feet. And the tree.
And what's the case number on this?
Nine.
Nine. Okay, we're ready for the next case. So this is case number nine. Location of property, three ninety-three Bedford Street. Type of district, highway business. Type of structure, existing dwelling, uh, with proposed use. Owner's name Ibrahim Mureya. Own's address, three ninety-three Bedford Street. When did you acquire this property? Eight, uh, August twenty-ninth, twenty fourteen. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes, has any previous appeal been made? Not within two years. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, section two forty dash seven point two, site plan approval. Reason for asking relief, proposed use of offices to be used for scheduling in-home visits for nursing and therapy treatments. Proposed use is allowed by zoning. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on April twenty-fourth and May first. Sitting on the case will be, uh, Mr. Jones, Mr. Curran, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blaws, and myself, John Gold Rosen. Uh, this, we do have an abutter present, so at this time we'll have the reading of the list of abutters.
This is the list of abutters, um, as, uh, does that have a date on here?
It'd be January.
April eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, Old Northeast Realty Limited, MKPM Whitman LLC, Depina John Jr. and Brenda, PMK LLC, Caro Claire Duffy, PMK LLC, Caro Claire Duffy, Wall Trust Properties Incorporated, Owens Judithy, Owens Judithy Trust, four oh nine Auburn Street, Whitman. And that's it.
Okay.
Hi.
Okay, as I said earlier, this meeting is being recorded, uh, and pursuant to town bylaws, and the tape of the recording is given to the Whitman Hansen Community Access so they can put it on their website. So, uh, since you're all here on this case, we ask that everybody take an oath. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemn swear to the MSHO, should given this matter should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, uh, procedure is we let the applicant make their presentation. I'll read letters into the record from town boards. We'll then have questions from members of the board, and we'll go out to the public for your comments and questions. So, uh, with the applicant, would you introduce yourself and explain what it is you want to do?
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name is Ibrahim. Um, we own a home health agency called Star Care Works. We are located at, um, three ninety-three Bedford Street. Uh, we applied to convert, uh, this location into a business location so that we can be able to conduct the business, uh, using the whole property. Uh, I'm here with Esther, she's a co-owner of the business. Uh, and we are privileged to be here with, uh, just request for the, for that.
So, do you currently live at this property?
No.
No, okay, has it been rental property, or what's it?
No, it hasn't been rented out.
So it's just unoccupied?
Just business, we've been doing business, uh, twenty-five percent of it has been used for business for home health.
Oh, okay, so what's the existing business?
What is that?
What, what, what is the business that you?
Uh, it's home health, uh, we are home health, uh, uh, agency. I send nurses to homes, uh, for care.
Okay, but that's, I guess the building inspector sent you to us because he thought it was a change in a.
Yeah, yeah, we applying so that we can use the whole building.
Oh, okay.
Instead of twenty-five percent of the building.
Oh, okay.
To use, I wanna use upstairs for offices for the business because we are currently wanna have, uh, uh, offices upstairs, all the room to utilize.
Okay, so up till now, it's, it's, it used to be a house.
Yeah.
You've been using about twenty-five percent of it.
About twenty-five.
And, uh, but otherwise it hasn't been used as a residential property, and you just want to be able to use the whole thing.
Yes.
Could you explain, because I, uh, when I get to the building inspector's com, and the building inspector couldn't be here tonight, he's, he lives in Halifax and they're having their town meeting tonight, but he did send a letter and discuss this with me. So he has some questions about the parking and the driveway. So can you explain what is there now for driveway and parking and any changes that you're going to make to it?
So currently, uh, we have a driveway that can accommodate up to four cars. At the back of, uh, gravelled area that can accommodate about two more cars. Uh, but, uh, in the future, we are planning on, uh, uh, paving the driveway and also at the back to create, uh, uh, set up parking.
Okay.
Yes.
And as far as the use goes, how many, besides you, how many employees do you have or would you have?
Uh, not more than four.
Okay. And you, do you have any, any clients or customers? No, so this is.
Clients don't come there, yeah.
You send people?
We go to clients' houses.
Okay.
And, and assisted living facilities, yeah.
Okay, so you just use it for scheduling and?
Yeah, scheduling, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, um. So let me read into the record the letters from town boards, uh, that we received from the planning board. And, and so all that this needs is site plan approval for, uh, a law of business use. Uh, so, letter from the planning board at the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting. The board reviewed the plan for three ninety-three Bedford Street. The planning board recommends approval of the requested variances by a vote of four zero zero. Uh, Mr. Griffin was not in attendance, Adam Somerville, chairman. From the building inspector, I have received and reviewed the application for site plan approval to change the use of the existing dwelling located at three ninety-three Bedford Street to be used as offices for scheduling in-home appointments, requiring approval from article six, section two forty dash seven point two. If the intended use is for office use with employees only, I have no concerns as long as all applicable building codes are met. If the intent is for the public to enter for health services, exams, or treatment of persons, then it is my opinion that the site plan being presented is insufficient. Respectfully, Robert Bickrelly, Women Building Commissioner, and I talked with him on the phone, his particular concern, if, um, there were going to be members of the public coming, is that you would need, you need a handicapped parking space. He didn't feel that was necessary if it was just employees. Okay, so with that on the record, let me go to, uh, questions from, from the board. Mr. Jones?
So, right now, twenty-five percent is being used for the business?
Yes.
The other seventy-five percent, are you, are you living there, is someone living there?
No, it's not being used.
Okay. And you want to use the entire view of the building for the business?
Yes.
Okay, and there, there's no residents there, nobody living there?
No.
Okay. Uh, that's another question.
And that would, we certainly want to make that a condition, that, uh, it be used strictly for the business and no residential use. Uh, Mr. Curran?
Um, how I?
I saw you.
Um, are you willing to, uh, say that you will approve the, the parking? Is that part of the decision, is we can require you to approve the parking at that?
Yeah, we, we, it's part of the plan, of the parking, yes.
Yeah, so right now, um, how many rooms are there in the house?
Uh, the, the house has up to five rooms.
So you'll keep the kitchen set up just so they can?
Uh, 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 when the plan is approved, um, planning on, like, uh, doing a monitoring, like, you move the kitchen.
So you make it like an office kitchen?
Yeah, it's gonna be an office, yeah.
Yeah. Um, are the neighbors complaining about anything ever, or you get along okay?
No, my neighbor is here.
We do have, uh, Mr. Pena.
Are you okay with what's going on in the parking?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm fine with, with everything that he's doing.
Um, I don't really have an issue, it's allowed by right, but then this is certainly site plan approval. In site plan approval, we usually get a bigger plan and it shows the size of the parking spots, and it shows a handicap spot or whatever, but, so you say you're gonna have up to five employees?
Uh, up to five, uh, four is the number because we are a small agency, we.
But no outside, the customer's not coming there at all?
No, 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 we go to the clients.
That's all, yeah. No comments, Mr. Jones?
Okay, Mr. Blaws?
I'll just make a notation that this actually is in highway business. So, and what, any idea of what year the house was built?
I think in nineteen hundred, yeah.
It's gonna be a hundred years old.
So the house pre, uh, predates zoning. Um, and you're okay that we put in the, so we're actually doing a change of, of, um, use.
Yeah.
So it's being used as, it's, it's a non-conforming now because it's residential in a highway business, once highway business was established, we're turning it back, we're turning it into, um, into, into a resident, I'm sorry, into a commercial use, taken away to residential, which means we might never, if you sell it, we might never approve residential use for ever again.
Yeah, that's.
And you're okay.
And I don't have any.
Want to make sure you understand that, um, will you have a sign out front?
Yeah, I do, yeah, I do have a sign.
There is a sign out there now?
Yeah.
You know, where is that sign? Is it on the stockade fence?
Business, I don't want it.
Oh, oh, I see, I'm sorry, it's right against the sidewalk.
It's just a business and professional.
Okay.
Highway business, it's, but anything that's not, trying to kind of, well, it has to have.
I can't think of any.
Okay, yeah, so just to, um, just emphasize, this is actually eliminated in a non-conforming use, so, uh, and I don't know how, how, any idea how long ago it was used for residential use? Because you've owned it since twenty fourteen?
I moved out of that house twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so you actually might, what's the two-year time period to give up?
Two years.
Yeah, so you've already actually lost the rights to use it for residence at this point, under zoning, because if a non-conforming use is discontinued, you've got two years to resume it. So it's lost the residential use, um, and as Mr. Blaws said, you know, we, I think we, or our future board would be reluctant to give any variance to allow it to resume a non-conforming use once it ceases being that. Um, I guess the question that I would have for you is think in terms of, um, not having to come back to us in the future, like, okay, you've got, say, four employees plus yourself, since you don't live there, you also have to drive there, so you probably need room for five cars. Um, you do better, you need a couple, you have a couple more employees, now maybe you're up to seven cars. Um, I mean, Mr. Curran, just based on, do you have any idea what the square footage of the building, of the interior space is?
Approximately four hundred.
It's what, four hundred?
Yeah, about that, yeah.
So if we were looking at this strictly as number of parking spaces required for an office?
Probably four or five.
Okay.
I, I would say that he must adjust the back to allow for parking of six cars total.
Total, so including he could have a couple out front, and four in back?
Four in back.
So I think, yeah, I think we should put a condition that you increase the back parking area, um.
To four vehicles?
Yeah, do you want to require that be paved, or do you want just?
Can you afford to pave it?
Uh, currently, the cars can be parked, there's enough space for six cars. There's enough space, I've, uh, uh, I did some work, landscaping, cars can be parked there.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm planning on paving, um.
So you are gonna pave?
Uh, the back is not paved.
No, will you pave it?
Oh, oh, yeah, I'll pave it, yeah, it's just.
I think he's okay for it. Is there any issues if you get along snow?
No.
You just push it back?
We just push it back, there's space for pushing the snow.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just space there, currently, I think two, I, I think it can fit six cars in that back.
Yeah.
There's no stress.
So, uh, and it's a.
So he's gonna need forty feet of pavement, forty feet wide?
Yeah.
And twenty feet deep.
Yeah, so first of all, see, the backyard open, or is it?
It's open.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think we should have a condition that you have sufficient, uh, a parking area in back sufficient for four cars, ten by twenty-foot spaces, what's required under the bylaw, which is right. And actually, Mr. Gavi, Mr. Gavi could probably give you some help in terms of, um, because you need space for cars to back in and out, and he would, he would know the requirements.
Currently, I would say there's enough space to do that, it's not paved.
Yeah.
There's some gravel on it, and, and sometimes I park cars there.
So if, if we said that you had to pave it within six months, would that be okay? Okay. I'd suggest allowing six months to pave it, so, but, um, yeah, I think, and Mr. Gavi, as I say, could help you with what the appropriate dimensions are to have at least four parking. So it sounds like you already have, the gravel's probably sufficient for four cars now, you just need to pave it, put a little berm around it, whatever. Um, and I think that, that condition and that it's, you know, to be used strictly for offices, um, not to be used by visits of members of the public, though again, to save you having to come back here, I'd suggest a condition that if it were to, if you were to have clients or members of the public visiting you, that you're required to have a handicapped accessible parking space. Would Mr. Curran, would that kind of take care of it, that if in the future somehow people are visiting? And I just want, I don't want to have you have to come back just because he needs to do a handicap space.
Well, what's the requirement for having a, if you have so many spaces, you need a handicap space?
Do you, Mr. Curran, do you not need?
There's no requirement, they don't have anybody coming in from the outside.
Yes, it's not for the public.
Employee spaces are, don't fall under that.
So I just want to cover him, and I don't want to make you put in a handicap space now, it isn't needed, but I think I'd like a.
Generally, they make reasonable accommodations for them, if there's somebody that needs it.
Yeah, but I at least wanted that if in the future, you know, I mean, it would still be the same kind of business, but if for some reason you have, I don't know, you do home healthcare, right?
Home health, yes.
So currently, a new client, you know, I'm a little familiar with this from my family, if you had a new client, you go out and visit the client, they don't come to see you before you set it up. But there might be some reason why, you know, one of the children of the client wants to come and visit you. So if it, for any reason.
We, we don't encourage.
You don't encourage it?
We don't encourage.
Yeah, I can understand that, yeah.
It's strictly home-based.
Yeah.
Uh, and even most of my employees don't come to the location, they go from, from their home to the.
From their home, right, right, right.
So the office is mainly managing the business.
Right.
Um, and scheduling.
Right. So I think maybe the condition should be, we should acknowledge that a handicap space is not required at this time because there are no members, no one other employee, it's employees only. And Jimmy, just put in there, if that should change, a handicap space would be required. Just, just leave it at that.
If we would require handicap parking space, everything else goes with it.
You have to have a ramp.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, every, yeah.
Uh, but this, it's employees based on.
Oh, I have one other question, get out. Mister Curran, being the former building inspector, I'll ask him in the absence of current building inspector. Are there, um, in terms of fire and bogan code for the use of that post?
You didn't read a letter from the chief, right?
We didn't, I didn't have a letter from the fire chief, but are there?
They're gonna have to put, um, make sure they have a local alarm and they're gonna have to have fire extinguishers, um, and emergency... You have emergency lights?
Uh, emergency lights?
Do they have light pads?
No, there, there is signs that you can...
You can push button to test them? Do you?
Emergency lights, no, but we have a fire extinguisher, we have a fire...
So the fire alarm has been out there, right?
Yeah, the, the firm, they've given us a certificate.
Rob will know what to do with that.
Okay, is it, any issue with, you know, separation of floors or anything when it's a commercial?
Not, not when it's office-only space and it's a smaller area that we...
Okay, alright.
It's a tiny house, so...
Yeah, 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 I just throw that out that you may find that you're required to do something, but that's not something that we would make as a condition. Alright, let me go to members of the public, Mister Pena, I guess.
Yes.
And just, just for the record, you're okay with this proposal?
I'm, yes, I'm okay with, yes, what they're doing, and it's, it's a very good idea.
Okay.
The only, I do have one, one issue, uh, is the sign that is out there, it's a beautiful sign, but when I come out of my driveway, I cannot see, when you look to the, to the left.
Yeah.
I cannot see the oncoming traffic from the red lights, you know, from the...
Yeah.
Have you got a permit for the sign?
What is that?
Yes, you got a permit?
Yeah, yeah.
And Rob allowed, and he allowed you to put it over here?
Yeah, yeah, we, it's permitted, we were told, we followed the instruction, eighteen inches from the curb.
Yeah.
Is it just a sign you put in the ground? What kind of sign is that?
Uh, it's just a regular sign, just the one.
But you got a permit and you got it inspected?
Yeah, we got the permit, it got, I believe it got inspected, um, it has all the permitting, we paid for it, yeah.
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 I think the best thing with us to talk to Rob?
Yeah, I, I mean...
She suggested, um, like, uh, we could take the bottom part of it and that could accommodate, uh, persons.
Would you, would you work on it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it, is it like, so it's like, how, how high is the sign?
Um, it's six feet, six feet. But she is suggesting if we can remove the...
Take, remove the bottoms?
The bottom one.
Cause the sign itself, how tall is the sign itself?
About six foot, so if we took the bottom one, it can leave about forty, uh, fifty inches, that would be...
Four feet?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, the sign, the, the sign itself is like four feet and then you got a two foot...
Uh, about six feet, it's as tall as you, like, six foot.
Well, what I mean is the, the printed part of the sign.
Oh, the printed, uh, it's about this size, uh, width, and the height is about six foot.
It's in sections.
Yeah, so that's, okay, so...
But you got the bottom filled in?
The, the bottom part I can remove.
Yeah, there shouldn't be anything all the way up to three foot six.
Yeah.
So...
We can remove the bottom part.
Yeah, so, say, forty inches.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause the other, the alternative would be if, if the sign were moved closer to his driveway, it'd be further away from Mister Pena's property. But if you can remove the bottom of it to remove that issue, I think that should be done.
Same for...
So we'll make that, make that a condition.
Yeah.
Okay. And this, I see a stockade fence there, um, which I guess goes back whenever, right? Yeah. Is, does the fence, the fence that's around his property and along the property line, does that affect your visibility?
No, the fence is okay.
Okay.
No.
It's just the sun.
Uh, far enough back.
Okay.
It's, it's just the sun.
Okay.
You know, I have to go, I'll get towards into the road to see if there's traffic.
Yeah.
Taken care of.
I can understand that.
It's taken care of now.
Okay.
It's taken care of.
Well, we're gonna require that the bottom part of the sign be removed. Okay.
I'll take it off tomorrow.
Okay, um, anything further, Mister Pena?
No, that's, that's all.
Okay, uh, anything further from members of the board? Okay, so what's being requested is site plan approval, the conditions we discussed were, um, no residential use of the property, uh, paving, the rear drive, the rear parking area within six months to accommodate, how many cars did he, four? Four cars, to accommodate a minimum of four cars, um...
Each space ten by twenty?
Each space ten by twenty feet, uh, was there any, oh, uh, removing the panel, the bottom panel of the sign to improve the visibility for the, uh, about as it, four oh one Bedford Street. Uh, is that it? Is there anything else?
That's all, yeah.
I think that's it? Okay, alright, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Moved by Mister Blaz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Kimball, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor? Five oh, okay, you're all set. Thank you, Mister Pena, you see, that, that helped us.
Good luck with this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having a business in Whitman.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Hope we don't beat your business.
Remind your, my future customers.
Okay, we have a couple minutes and I'll talk about Mister Andrews. So we have the minutes for case number seven, Open Door Home Solutions, two seventy-eight Bedford Street. Let me see who is on this, who's here.
I'm with you.
Yeah, so myself, Mister Blaz, Mister Curran, and Mister Jones were here. Um, motion is made by Mister... Were you here?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, you're here, you just didn't sit on the case though. Okay, so it should be the four who actually sat on the case.
I'll second it.
Alright, so Mister Curran makes the motion, is that right?
I did.
Yeah, okay, motion made by Mister Curran, second by Mister Blaz, all in favor? Okay, four oh on that one. And then the general minutes for the meeting, we can...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mister Kimball, second?
Second.
Who seconded?
Yeah, I did.
Mister Blaz, all in favor? Okay, five oh on that. Uh, future meetings, um, we have a hearing already scheduled for June ninth, uh, which is for the Jamie's property, for the marijuana operation there. They're coming back to amend the special permit, to add some additional conditions, just as we did with the, uh, the other marijuana place. As I did with that, I'll draft some conditions ahead of time and send them on to you, send them on to the applicant, so... And they, they've told us, we'll, we'll reiterate it when they come in, but I mean, the attorney has told me that they're not planning any changes to what they previously proposed. And as long as that's the case, we can limit it, you know, pretty much to just going over the, the conditions. Um, then we have a new application that came in, which is, uh, the Commonwealth Shoe Property. There are some res, some existing commercial space in the ground floor that they want to convert to residences, not the whole, just based in the application, I think it's just the, when you go into Marble Street, like where Whitman Wellness Center was, that's the space they want to convert to apartments.
The campground.
They can, yeah, can't get, so, so they have, they've, so they've applied, so we haven't scheduled that. So first of all, for the...
How many new units?
Eight, eight apartments is what's in the application, and it's like eight thousand square, nine thousand square feet.
That's timeout sports is right there, right?
I don't think they're talking about changing that. I, I haven't seen the plans, but I'm thinking, cause it's only, um, eight or nine thousand square feet of commercial space that they want to change, and there's a lot more than that.
I used to get a call every day about noise in that area, but I can't wait to see that.
That, that whole side, I think first floor was...
Timeout sports makes noise and they...
Yeah, but there on the other side, I don't think, we'll see, I don't think it's timeout that they're talking about. I think it's within Marble Street.
Timeout sports is gonna still be there.
Yeah, that's...
They're gonna be making a lot of noise, yeah, it's, it's tough.
Alright.
But I, I, I'm not opposed to...
Yeah, anyway, that's what that application for. So first of all, for June ninth, since we are down to five of us plus Bob Keeman, uh, can everybody make it on June ninth? Do we have any issue?
I'll be here.
Okay.
Let me look here, cause I'm gonna be going to La Conia.
Okay.
Has anybody heard anything about Coakley's property, the, the office bar there? Haven't heard anything.
Yeah. Um, so for, and as long as you're looking up your calendar deck for, I was hoping we could have the hearing on Marble Street, Commonwealth Shoe, on June twenty-third, how does that work for people?
I'm okay on the ninth and the twenty-third.
Okay.
Me too.
Everybody else? Okay.
That works.
Alright, um, I might as well go ahead and ask, in case we get something else in the next month before we meet in June, if people know of weeks in July and August that they're not gonna be around at this point, let me, let me know, um...
Well, the week after the fourth.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm actually, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be away that week myself. Uh, and I wouldn't want to be there the, the week of, so we would not meet the week of the thirtieth or the week of July seventh or sixth, whatever that week is, for sure.
I'm not around on the twenty-first.
July twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a sign there.
Any...
July twenty-first? Oh, July.
Yeah, yeah.
July twenty-first.
Anybody else know at this point? I mean, I would probably make it, um, the second Monday in July, whatever, is that?
The fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Yeah, I, I, I'd probably look to schedule on July fourteenth if we get something in the next couple of weeks. Okay, um, alright, so, uh, other business, I have a, uh, I received a copy of, uh, a letter, uh, that Wayne Andrews sent to Kyle Kowalski as chairman of the Board of Selectmen, which is our appointing authority, uh, and this was, uh, I think the day of town meetings, I think it was May eighth, May fifth, rather. Uh, dear Mister Kowalski, due to my age and medical problems, I find myself in the position of needing to resign from both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. I served over forty years with the zoning board and three terms with the planning board. Please accept my resignation effective May eighth, twenty twenty-five, Wayne Andrews. Um, I talked to Wayne, uh, the day after, um, it's not something, you know, some urgent issue, it's just he's, he's had to give up driving and his wife doesn't drive at night, and surely probably could have worked out something that he'd bring him, but he, he didn't want that, and I think he just feels there's times he's not at his best and that's how, wouldn't want to do the job if he isn't. So, uh, I said to him, and I, I think I talked to Adam Somerville the night of town meeting, because we both got to know that night, said, well, we should have a dinner or something for him, and I suggested that to Wayne, he didn't, he didn't want that.
Do you think he would have a lunch with us? Could we all go to lunch, even if he, we, we, if we didn't offer to pay, but pay, pay his lunch? The last meeting we had, he said something to me about he was going to see a doctor, and I think that's what it was about.
Yeah, he, I mean, he has a couple of issues to go, I just didn't want people to think from this that this was some sudden crisis, this is just sort of been a issue. And the big thing was giving up driving, you know, it just wouldn't be easy for him to get here. Um, well, I'll press him again on the idea of, like, we're not looking for speeches or something, we'd just like to take you out, and lunch probably be better than dinner for him and his wife.
For all the work he's done, so that's what...
Yeah, yeah, um, but for, um, otherwise, uh, I thought of a plaque, uh, if people have other ideas.
That, that's fine, that's wonderful too. But I agree, he needs to be recognized for all his service.
Yeah, 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 I mean, I'd, uh, if he wasn't, so be reluctant, that'd be suggested to the Board of Selectmen and citation from the state legislature and all that stuff, but clearly he doesn't, he doesn't want that. Um, alright, can I, I guess I'll just, since we're spending, we do have money in the expense accounts of fifteen, yes, at least this fiscal year. Can I have a motion to authorize the chairman to, uh, obtain a plaque and...
Mister Murphy?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mister Curran, uh, second by Mister Kimball, all in favor? Okay, um, and with that being said, uh, obviously a reason I ask for, where, what everybody's schedule is that we're down now to six effective members, uh, and Mister Keeman, you know, working sometime and whatnot, um, I, uh, Bob Kimball has been the senior of the associate members. I've asked him if he was willing to become a full member, and he is.
Oh.
I actually looked up, my term ends at the end of June, and actually yours does too, Bob. Uh, but we haven't got any notices yet from the Selectmen. I think that usually happens after the town election and the Selectmen reorganization. But I'll send an email at this point to Mary Beth and Kyle and just say, yes, this situation and presumably, oh, you may need to submit a letter just saying that you're willing to become a full member, but we can wait for that until June. And I'll just point out to them that this now means we'll have two vacancies as associate members, so if they...
Did Ed Woodhead speak to you?
He did, yeah, I actually spoke to one person at town meeting, he's currently a member of the Conservation Commission. He can see he was interested in possibly doing this, so I discussed that with him. Um, there was somebody else I talked to at town meeting too, so, um, so we'll see. But it, obviously, and usually in the summer it does, it happens some years where we've had trouble getting five members here for a summer meeting, so to the extent I can minimize that, I will. But, um, that's where we are. Um, so, anything further? No, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mister Kimball, say a second?
Second.
Second by Mister Curran, gee, all in favor?
I try to let somebody jump in.
Alright, we are adjourned.